Okay. Hello, everyone. Welcome to our wonderful question and answer forum with our District Two School Board candidate Kathleen Canino. We also have a wonderful monitor, Michael, here with us. He is the PTA president at one of her schools, which is fantastic. And we also have a couple of people that are going to be joining us throughout that are on now, our attendees that are watching live and will have questions hopefully for us. And then, of course, I have my questions I'll be asking Kathleen. We thank everyone for joining us on this panel of question and answers. We're going to be asking Kathleen some, I think they're kind of hard hitting questions, 2.0 versus what they've done in some of the surveys. We did invite Rosalind Hanson to join us, and at first she was going to be joining us, but I think something came up, and so she was not able to join us tonight. So we're sad that she couldn't join us, but we will be answering the questions to Kathleen, and we appreciate her being here. And we very much are excited to see how you answer the questions and for us all to get to know you. The main thing is that we get our, our, our community members educated on both of the candidates so that they can make a more informed decision at the voting booth. And we, of course, want everyone to go and vote at these runoffs. We have three runoffs in our St. Tammany Parish for the school board. One of them is District Two, and then we also have two other ones that are going as well, but it's super important that everyone gets out to vote. We highly encourage you. If you don't know if you're in District Two or not, feel free to reach out to any of us. We can all help you find what district you are in and if one of your districts is in a runoff. But that's this Saturday. I believe the polls, what time do they open, Kathleen? Six?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven to eight, yeah.
Seven to eight PM. So, um, yes, get out and vote. There's three amendments also that are super important. I don't think people realize that. So even if your candidate or your district is not in a runoff, there's still three amendments to vote on. So do get out to vote. So voting is available for everyone. So that's just my little go vote commercial there. But we'll go ahead and jump into the questions, Ms. Kathleen. And we will move on. And then, once I'm done with my questions, we'll turn it over to anyone that's an attendee and to Michael. I'll ask their additional questions. So, awesome. Okay. So my first question for you is probably similar to what you've already had, but I like the wording of this coming from one of the people in the public. This being your first time running for a public office, what motivated you to run for a school board position?
So my, my, I have two children and my son's experience was one of them, but he started in pre-K about four years ago, and then I started volunteering as an advocate for families in the parish. And so I've been attending IEPs and helping families navigate that. And through that, I have found that families seem to face the same issues over and over. So every time they get a new teacher, they're redoing the IP and having more and more meetings. And so instead of families facing this every year, I was hopeful that I could help make systemic change through policy changes, you know, and getting families answers and maybe being able to research sources or, you know, different ways of doing things and really just making systemic change so that families have a little bit easier navigating their way.
Nice, nice. That's awesome. I think that's a great answer and a good reason to be running. Fantastic. Okay, my second question is, what skills, talents, and experience do you bring that will make you qualified and effective in this role?
So, um, at the end of the day, I think it's important to look at what someone's done in, as, in the past, as a prediction of what they can do in the future. And for myself, I've been very involved. I attend almost all the, you know, school board meetings in person. And if I end speak, and if I can't be there, then I watch online. I, like I said, I volunteer as an advocate for families. And so I'm in the schools a lot, and I speak with the teachers a lot and the families. And I see the struggle on both sides. And, you know, some of the issues that, that we're facing, like teacher retention. And for me, it's important to be involved so that I can make a difference. And I've, for my son, he has a disability, and he was nonverbal at the time when he started pre-K. So I started working with legislators to advocate for cameras in classrooms. And it took about three years to get that passed, going to Baton Rouge and testifying in front of the Senate and House Education Committee. And finally, that passed last year, 2021. And then, and then we came back, or this year, we went back, or I went back to legislators and harassed them to fund the cameras because a lot of districts didn't have those resources. And so they allocated $8 million for the entire state. And so it was enough to, for every district to have the cameras fully funded as far as purchasing those for their self-contained classrooms. And also through that process, I've made a lot of connections, and I've met with Dr. Brumley and Meredith Jordan, who are both at the Louisiana Department of Education. So I just feel that if St. Tammany needs something, that I would be an asset because I would be able to help navigate that, whether it's legislatively or policy, I feel that I had to also learn a lot of educational law in the process. So I just feel that navigating that is kind of difficult most of the time, but I could help, you know, do something with that. And, um, and I don't give up. So obviously, after four years.
Yes, I can just say, my little piece in here is I, before I got involved in the school board election, is I've done a lot in the state capital for other, other things. And it is very difficult up there. And to, for, know someone that has actually gotten a bill passed, and not only passed, but funded, is amazing to me because I had 56 bills last session that we were just trying to get through the basics, and none of them went through, zero.
That's a great experience to have, for sure.
Yeah, so that's fantastic. Well, thank you for that. And I appreciate you letting us all know about your experience and what your talents and skills are. Because I think navigating from a school board position, definitely, everyone on the school board currently are kind of like, oh, it's all from Bessie. It's all from Bessie. They're doing it. So you know already people there and how the system works and how to navigate it. I think that's an amazing skill. So, awesome. So number three, what have you identified as the main issues with St. Tammy School System that you think the new board with you on it can change and improve?
Um, I think one of, one of the main issues is going to be regaining the public's trust. I think for some families that it, or the community, that has become an issue, the transparency. And I know for myself, that is important for me to have the transparency and the accountability. And just a way to help facilitate communication between the community and the board and the district. Because right now, through attending the board meetings, I see a lot of frustration with the community trying to get things on the agenda, trying to have a voice, trying to have some dialect back and forth. And if, if I'm elected, I hope that is one of the things that I really want to change. I want to make, I want to ensure that there is a way for the public and the community to put things on the agenda so that we can talk about things, so that we can fix things. Because right now, St. Tammany, I mean, we have the capability to be an amazing school district to, to lead in Louisiana. And I think we just need a little more direction and communication and listen to the community and the parents and the teachers and the staff and what they need. And all that, I think, comes really down to communication and transparency. So that's what I hope to establish a specific way for the community getting something on the agenda. And for myself, I would make myself available to, you know, to have that dialect, to have that communication.
I love it. Yeah, I think that's fantastic. I do, I do think that's needed. So wonderful, fantastic. Okay, so this is kind of like a multiple part question. In your own words, what is the role of the school board members too? And then there's five different groups, the students, the teachers, the parents, central office, and taxpayers. And then the other parts are, and if there's a, is there a hierarchy? And how would you rank your responsibility to each of these different groups, if that makes sense? Do you want me to repeat that, or you think you?
I think I know. Um, so I feel that, well, the board is elected by the community, and all of those groups are part of our community. But it is the board's responsibility to provide oversight and hire and fire the superintendent. And then the superintendent is the one who has oversight of the administration, the teachers, and all that. So I think the board is there to hold the superintendent accountable. And so if people come to us, it's our responsibility to represent them and to find out what's going on and to give them a voice, you know, and just make sure everything is working as it should. For the hierarchy, it is the community. And I feel like people leave that part off. The community is first, then the board, then the superintendent, and then he oversees the schools and the administration. So again, the board's job is to hold the superintendent and ourselves as a board, if I were elected, as a board member accountable. And then the superintendent is over everyone else, but it is our job to be the voice of those who come to us as a community member or even a staff member. Because we have to hold the superintendent accountable. So.
Okay, good, good. I like that. Good. Okay. And then, um, number five, last week, Lee Berrios was making public comment and was interrupted by the school board lawyer. Did you see this? You were there, right?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay. And then what are your thoughts on this matter?
Um, so let me first say, Lee Berrios, she's a retired school teacher. She's, she's at every board meeting, or 99.8% of them. And she always is respectful. She does her homework, and she always fact checks things before she says them with documentation, public record requests, all that. So when Ms. Berrios gets up there and speaks, she's not just making any kind of allegations, and she's just talking, you know, from what she's been told and what she's checked. So for the board not to listen or to say that she was being disrespectful or, you know, out of order, I feel like they're just violating her First Amendment rights. Saying someone's name should not violate that. And it, and I don't believe that it warrants getting the police to come and escort her out, possibly. I think that's a bit excessive. And, and that's one of the things that we need to change is listening to our community members and listening to, you know, to, to fix it, to address it, not listening just to have a response or to quiet that person. So, um, that was a bit ridiculous, I think.
Yeah. Good. Well, thank you. And I appreciate you being here because likely you attend a lot of the meetings. So I, I don't think people really understand what's going on or the environment that is created there. Again, like I said, I have been to the State House plenty of times, and I've testified in front of committees as well as, you know, groups and things like that. I've never felt or been treated like I have been at the school board. And that's a local school board. Like, I, I thought, oh, this is going to be a breeze. Uh-uh, the enemy that is coming across is crazy. I, I couldn't believe it. I was like, this is crazy. And they hand this little paper to you about the rules of testifying? I'm like, are you kidding me? Like, I never received this at the State House, and I have to sign it, and they have someone that steals, like, the little sign-in sheet at exactly 5:45? Like, who can sign up before 5:45? Anyway, those are my pet peeves, that you guys go every meeting is amazing for me because I, it takes everything in me to go, and it's very hard to stay because the way they treat you and the way they make it feel in there. So kudos to you and Ms. Lee for going to the meetings all the time, even after they treat you like that. Okay, so this is a four-part question. This actually comes from me.
Okay.
So this is my four-part question. And it's, I'm going to kind of go through some of the first kinds of questions, and then I'll go into what I'm asking you. So the first is, do you understand the term regulatory capture when it is used in reference to the CDC and FDA?
Yes.
Kind of understand that. So this is my definition of what that is, regulatory capture. This is when farmer, pharma owns the supposed independent regulatory consumer protecting agencies. So they are ineffective and do not provide any protection to the public. There is basically just a show. They, I mean, they're supposed to be there to protect the public from pharma, unfortunately, open bots so that they are no longer doing that role. So that's, you understand that regulatory capture? So now that we understand that, so using this definition, would you say the current school board is captured by the administration, central office, superintendent, that entity? And however you want to define that, my final question is, how would you help to prevent this from happening in the next four years?
So, yes, I feel that that's a pretty accurate description of what's going on with the current board. I feel like there's a lot of rubber stamping. I feel that we, or the new board, should trust but verify. And a way to not have that happen with the new board is, well, I believe it's going to be through transparency. I think that's what's going to help stop that or not allow it to happen. I do also think a lot of the new board members would not fall into that. I think they're going to be a lot more outspoken and ask a lot of questions. But transparency, I feel, is the best solution to prevent that from happening again.
Yeah.
And just very good.
And as far as transparency, like, how would you define transparency as far as what that would look like?
So for example, when we have the board meetings and they are listing the items and they label them like A, B, C, D. We need to, you know, be more transparent. We need to list that out. We need to have an accurate description. We need to have that on the agenda before the board meeting starts or before 24 hours. We also, for, you know, the fiscal accountability, I believe, I really feel that they should have done the Louisiana checkbook so that people can, you know, really have true access to that. When there's public record requests, we need to fill them. And I think that the school board has an attorney, and he's the attorney for both the board and for central office. And my, my opinion is that that's a conflict. I think it would be more beneficial for the board to have their own attorney because how can you represent both parties and, you know, be neutral? I mean, when you're looking for the, looking out for the best interest of one party, then obviously the other party's not getting the whole truth. So I think the board having their own attorney would be very beneficial to also help that.
Yeah, that's good, good. No, I like that. Thank you for your definition on that one. And this is my final question, then we already have one question lined up from the audience. So my final question is, what have you learned in the last six months during your campaign?
A lot. Um, just, well, one, I didn't, I did not realize how political a school board race was. As far as, so when I wanted to decide to run, I was more, I just want to help the kids. I want to focus on the education. And I didn't realize it was a, such a political arena. I know it is a political race, but that's why my slogan is, I'm a parent and not a politician. And for me, it's just important that we do what's right for the kids first. So just learning every, I guess, every, our different people's backgrounds and different people's definition of what that is, has been a learning process.
Yeah. Awesome. Good. Very cool. Michael, I was going to ask the questions that are in the Q and A and then turn it over to you. If you have any additional ones, are you okay with that?
Oh, yes, that's fine.
Okay, so the one question that I have that I see so far, and, and for the panel, or for the attendees that are out there, if you have additional questions, please type them in now because I want to address them. But this first question says, what are some of the things you plan to change if you were elected to this position?
Um, so one of the things that I would like to address is the internal auditor. Right now, the, our internal auditor is not to the same standard as a national, the National Board for Internal Auditor standards. But, I mean, that, St. Tammany has their own job description for what that is, and that is what he, our internal auditor does. And he's very good at it, but he is one person, and there's 55 schools. And it takes him, I believe, he said, like, up to a year to get around to all those schools, and then he has to go back to some to check if he does.
It was two years.
Yeah. All right. So, uh, and then he does the money, but he said he did not audit processes. And I think that we need an additional auditor, honestly. Uh, and I think that we need to change the definition of what our internal auditor does to include auditing processes. Because I think that would, you know, be a significant benefit to our staff, to the students, especially when we have, you know, redundant paperwork or processes or things aren't working. It would allow us to look at that and not be, not have it, you know, brought up at a school board meeting all the time. Because we would be addressing that and being proactive about it. Also, some of the other things I would like to address are, is the teacher retention and recruitment. Right now, we're losing our good teachers, and it's not due, it's not only due to financial reasons. I know from some of the teachers I've spoken with, the environment that they work in, whether it is a toxic environment, or it is the behavior, or they just don't feel that they can teach, they're, you know, focused on the test too much. We need to talk to our educators and really figure out how we can support them so that our good teachers stay and our kids benefit from that. But I could get, I could just go on and on. There's a lot, there's a lot that I would like to do. And putting the kids first and supporting our teachers is two of the main things, being transparent, holding, you know, ourselves and our, the administration and the superintendent accountable, and, you know, asking a lot of questions, seeing where we're at, and looking at the budget really to see how we're using those funds. And if we're using them in the best way we can right now, because I feel that if you're not looking at the, if you're not auditing the processes, and it's taking two years to get to all the schools, you know, there's got to be things in there that are not as good as they could be, processes that as good as they could be. And so I'm sure money is overlooked. I know I've looked at the budget, and I've seen where we have a lot of rollover funds and some of the federal funds. And just, you know, getting those questions answered so that we can better make use of our funds and taxpayer money.
Yeah, good. Sounds like a lot. Four years is a long time, but when you have some big issues to try to fix, I think we'll definitely be keeping you busy.
Yeah.
Awesome. Very cool. Okay, Michael, do you have any additional or anyone else out there? If you have any additional questions, this is the time to ask.
Sure, I have a subject that I've been dealing with. My child is in sixth grade, and she's been in the school system since kindergarten. And I've dealt with or experienced an issue throughout the entire time she's been in school. And so if everything's about the students, what I find, you mentioned teaching to the test.
Yeah.
Testing and, and curriculum hours. And I know that just saying having less hours of instruction, or they call it instructional hours, I guess, is not as easy as it sounds because there's probably a lot of federal funding and things that are tied up in that. But one of my pet peeves is that healthy, healthy bodies equals healthy minds. And so I find that the amount of time that kids are allowed outside of the classroom to do activities, recess, free play, is just ridiculously low. And in some of the schools, it's, and it may be because of the facilities, where if it's raining, or if it rained yesterday and the yard is wet, well, they have inside recess. And, or, and sometimes inside recess means sitting in the hallway and being quiet. And so there are hundreds, maybe even thousands of studies all over the world that show that increased free play recess time actually improves
Behavior.
Testing score, it improves behavior, but it improves testing scores. And so I know some people, the school board, I believe, has a, or the school system has a health advisory council. And part, it's part of their job is not only food, but also healthy play and activities and things like that. And I know that they are concerned about this also. They haven't been meeting. So I guess if there's a question here, it is would trying to, and this may take some of your legislative experience, trying to make a, make it a, an agenda item that is gonna, you're gonna have to stick with for many years to get, to change anything, but to get more free play recess time required in school, in the school system. It's ridiculously low. So there you go.
Yeah. Um, I think when my son was there, it was 15 minutes, 15 to 20 minutes. That was it. And they, and about the same for lunch. And I was like, what? How? I mean, by the time some of those kids go through the line, like lunch was over. Um, but I do know running for school board, one of the candidates that was not elected, but she spoke, I believe it was at Vida Elementary. They changed their schedule, and they had three recesses. So I think it would be, I think it's up to the principal, I want to say, but I feel that that is definitely something that we as board members should look at. And if we are able to make that a policy in St. Tammany, we could do that without having to go to the state.
Yeah, I mean, there is some policy already, I think, through the Department of, Louisiana Department of Education.
Yeah, they get 30, 30 minutes, I believe.
To have 30 minutes.
But they count PE.
I understand, yes.
So that's.
So anyway, I just, my question was, would you make it a priority to try to?
Yeah, increase that, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Especially with you being one of her schools, and you're one of her constituents. I think Kathleen has been saying that the communication between, you know,
Right, what?
gonna have is gonna be where she is your advocate. And I think that's been a faulty part of what the previous school boards have been. Their communication is just poor.
Yeah, we haven't had issues, and it wasn't the principal's fault or necessarily any specific teacher, but
Right.
there was, there was a policy in place where kids were actually, where their recess, their minimal recess time was actually taken away as punishment for, like, talking in class, which is the opposite of what should be happening.
Those kids probably need a break more.
They need a break. That's correct. So.
Yeah.
And that has stopped.
Yeah, good. Okay. Yeah, because I was going to say, I posted something about that not long ago, that it, Louisiana Department of Education all, actually says in their health standards, or the standards for physical activity, that that is not allowed.
I, yes, I know. I had to, I had to bring that up with my, with Simone.
Yeah.
People.
That's great. That was a good question, Michael. Thank you. Thank you. It's, are there any other questions last time? All right. And so I'm going to give you the floor in the last couple of minutes, Kathleen. Is there anything last minute that you'd like to say or tell any of the voting public out there for District Two? Or, you know, just kind of throw it over to you.
Um, well, one, thank you for this opportunity to speak. This, running for school board for me is, is a passion because this is something that, it means a lot to me. And it's something that I feel that I could be effective at and that I'm not going to back down from, you know, if there is an issue that needs to be addressed, I will make sure it is addressed. And I just hope that everyone will get out and vote on December 10th. And especially those people who vote at, across from, on Jefferson, my, wait, I'm mind-blown blank. It's where I vote. There is a Christmas parade on the 10th, and it's going to start at 3:00 PM. They're going to start lining up. So the roads are going to kind of get crazy over there, but it's the Justice Center parking garage voting location. So if you vote there, please get out and go early, or just know that it may be a bit chaotic over there. And whether you want to vote for me or not, just please get out and vote. It is so important. This is our kids. This is our community. And the next four years. And the next four years are really gonna make a difference. Um I know a lot of people put a lot of hard work into bringing change for our school board so that we have change in our schools and throughout our community and whether I'm elected or not, I will be there at the school board meeting. So um I hope that I am able to be the community's voice and the parents' voice and, you know, just help get some stuff done. And thank you and vote for Kenny.
I love it. Thank you, Kathleen. Uh Michael, did you have anything else? Um?
No, I just wanted, I just want to say thank you, Kathleen, for for showing up and uh answering questions.
Well, thank you for coming too.
And thank you for your interest in in helping out our children because there's, what you're doing is um something I certainly would never consider doing. So even though, even though I want to help my children, um what you're doing takes a lot of guts. So.
Well, thank you. Um.
Yeah, and thank you to everyone that that joined us um live. Um I know there's gonna be a lot of people watching the recording of this. If you do have any additional questions, feel free to type them in the comments of whatever video tag Kathleen or Rosalyn so they can answer your questions. Um and we really appreciate your time um being a part of this, learning more about the candidates so you can make an educated vote. Biggest thing like Kathleen said, please go vote. I think that's the most important. Um I'm gonna end the recording here. And then if you have any additional questions, um you know, after the recording, feel free to stay on and and we'll chat. But um thank you to everyone that was a part of this and we wish you the best of luck. Take care.